Welcome, everyone. I'm Councilmember Chris Wray, and I'm going to call to order the May 14, 2024 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. With me today is Deputy Council President Barbara D. Michelle and Councilmembers Zach Hall. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may make public comment after a presentation and council question and answer. So members of the public may address the council at this time, either in person or virtually. City Clerk, do we have anyone online with us or not in the room?
Chair Wray, no one has signed up prior to the meeting, and we have no virtual attendees at this time.
All right. Then I'm going to skip forward a little bit and go to the agenda for this evening's meeting. First order of business is approval of the minutes. Any objection to approving the minutes from the April 10, 2024 meeting? Seeing no objections, the meeting minutes are approved. We have a single agenda item for today's meeting. It is COM 0011, the 2025 to 2030 six-year transportation improvement plan. It's going to be presented to us this evening by Greg Lucas, Senior Transportation Engineer, with support from John Mortensen, Transportation Engineering Manager. So with that, Greg, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Hopefully, you guys can hear me okay. Good evening, Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. My name is Greg Lucas, and I'm an engineer in the Public Works Department. I'm here to present on behalf of the 25 to 2030 six-year transportation improvement program. John Mortensen is also available digitally. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an opportunity for this committee to review, to discuss, and to provide feedback on the transportation projects and programs proposed in the draft transportation improvement program. And tonight, we are seeking feedback from the committee on the proposed transportation For a little bit of background on tonight's presentation, every two years, the city adopts a six-year capital improvement plan. This is a process where staff reviews expenditures and revenues and plans out projects for the next six years. Projects include transportation, but other asset categories such as parks, facilities, and utilities are also in the process. The chapter in the capital improvement plan relating to transportation doubles as the transportation improvement program. However, state law requires agencies such as the City of Issaquah to adopt a transportation improvement program every year by July 1. In years such as this, where there is no capital improvement program update, we need to adopt an updated transportation improvement program as a standalone program. And at a high level, the transportation improvement program identifies projects and programs, which phase they're in, whether it's design or right-of-way acquisition, construction or planning, and either identifies secured or recently expected funding sources and the amount. Most state and federal grant opportunities require projects to be in the transportation improvement program. The master mobility plan, that was adopted in 2021. This planning document is a foundation document used to help the transportation improvement program with its guiding principles, evaluation criteria, and the scoring in the planning document. I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. This year, we have presented at three transportation advisory board meetings and once with the environmental board to discuss the transportation improvement program and minor changes to the project prioritization process. And then during the assembly of this year's transportation improvement program, the administration was also considering available funding sources, both within the city, certainly such as grants. This slide's been used previously and intended to demonstrate how the transportation improvement program fits not only within the capital improvement program, but also with the policies identified in the city's comprehensive plan as a whole. Projects in the capital improvement plan and transportation improvement program reflect the goals and policies established by many of the city planning documents, such as the mobility master plan, the ongoing transit study, ITS plan, park strategic plan. The transportation improvement program has a variety of project types and programs within it. There's annual projects such as pavement management program and ADA improvements. There's projects underway, such as Newport Way Maple to Sunset, Newport Way S Southeast 54th to 900, improvements on Northwest Semamish Road, multimodal improvements, Juniper Street, Central Issaquah multimodal I-90 crossing, name a few. There's also projects being worked on with public safety in mind, referred to here as mandated projects. A couple of those include the landslide repair on Newport Way, which is in a permitting process. Project to replace the retaining wall on Black Nugget Road behind Red Meyer area. There's also plans to retrofit a bridge on Gilman over Issaquah Creek, I believe. The draft 2025 to 2030 transportation improvement has a few new priority projects we are proposing to begin the planning and design a few years out, which we'll get into greater detail a little later. And the projects that have been identified but do not have funding sources identified yet are a long-term project. These projects could be included in the program. When the mobility master plan was implemented in 2021, it was used to score over 100 projects based off the guiding principles and associated scoring criteria within each principle. The top-scored projects were the city's priority and implemented or included in that year's transportation improvement program. Projects that were not included were recognized as future investments. These are generally seen in the back of all the year's transportation improvement program, identified as future-year projects. The development of this year's transportation improvement program began by evaluating if any changes were needed to the guiding principles of the mobility master plan in a review of future-year projects from the previous year's transportation. So as I mentioned earlier, we met three times with the TAB this year to discuss the transportation improvement program and the process to select the projects. In January, we gave a high-level overview of kind of what the tip is and the steps towards implementing it. February, we focused on the guiding principles, evaluation criteria, and scoring of the mobility master plan. During this meeting with the TAB, some minor changes were made to the improved mobility within Issaquah and promote environment-guiding principles. And then finally, in March, we met with the TAB again to review and discuss the transportation improvement program and the project that we're at. We also met with the environmental board. This discussion was around the promote environment-guiding principle of the mobility master plan and the updates that were made to it from the February TAB meeting. The environmental board provided some feedback to us and the TAB. Feedback listed here, some of it was improvement alignment with the two plans, the mobility master plan and the climate action plan, and some additional considerations for environmental impacts of projects, application of the criteria. The environmental board gave us a memo, and that's attached to this. Ultimately, this process led us to adding five projects to the transportation improvement program. There's Front Street and Northwest Dogwood intersection improvements, Three Trails Crossing intersection study, East Sunset Way improvements, four-door study, 20th Ave Southeast and Southeast 51st Street improvements, and the citywide advanced signage project. There were some other changes to the transportation improvement program that was found in the staff report as well. Two other considerations for me to mention tonight regarding the development of this transportation improvement program are that was staff availability and external funding sources, which go a long way towards getting these projects through the design and construction processes. We looked at projects in the existing TIP and projects that we wanted to add and to make sure that staff wouldn't become too busy and couldn't advance the projects. This helped to kind of determine the capacity to add projects and which years we could add them. And to implement these projects, grant funds will be needed. We reviewed projects that and funding sources that we are pursuing currently. Instead of adding projects that would compete with our existing projects, we wanted to add projects that could reach funding sources that wouldn't compete. Here are many of the funding sources out there. Cities utilized many of these recently. A lot of these are federal or state and federal grants. A lot of the external funding, also development agreements the city has with developers. And then our transportation project also have a lot of local fund options, such as the new transportation benefit, district sales tax, impact fees, and bond. The new projects that we added, we'd like to potentially pursue transportation improvement board funding for the Front Street and Northwest Dogwood intersection improvements. That would be through their urban arterial program. And another grant, which is not listed here, is the Federal Highway State Improvement Program. We think the citywide advanced signage project could be credited for that. I guess now I'll briefly describe each project that was added, the years we'd like to begin them. I'll start with the Front Street and Dogwood intersection improvements. We'd start design for this project in 2028. And this would evaluate the alignment of the intersection, resurface the street, like to build the traffic signal along with some other improvements. This is the project that we'd like to do the transportation improvement board funds.
Greg, what I think we want to do is for each of the, when you hit each project, let's pause for a second and see what kind of questions we might have about that. So when you get to the end of this one, pause, and then we'll do questions.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Questions on this one? Councilmember D. Michelle?
So I was really happy to see this on the list, and I'm really, really familiar with that intersection. When you say realign the intersection, it has that kind of strange dog leg that, you know, are we going to actually bring those together? Or what does realign the intersection mean there?
I mean, I think we would look at the best possible, you know, closest thing we could get to that, you know, that we don't want to disrupt too much of the existing improvements there. So but yeah, that's, the thought is going to get them as close to alignment as possible. But it's kind of hard to give too much of an answer. I think that's kind of the, in that rainier, that's a tricky intersection. There's a few of these in this intersection.
Any other questions on this one? All right, bring them on.
All right. And I guess the next project added was the second phase of a Three Trails Crossing project at Gilman and Juniper. There was some previous improvements to this intersection a few years back, but further improvements were always anticipated. This project would start as a planning study to help identify how we could further improve another one of these unique intersections, particularly the south leg of this. There's an opportunity here to coordinate with the park staff because there's central public art identity.
Any questions on this one? Same, same sort of thing as the last one. How is it going to hang together? But it's still early, so we look forward to that.
Yeah. Yep. And then here's another planning study. This one's on East Sunset Way from Front Street to the I-90 limited access. There's been quite a bit of public feedback at this location, whether it's for east-west bike lanes, parking, pedestrian crossing improvements, traffic issues, bus transit issues. The congestion kind of bifurcates Old Town here. And so with this, all this competing interest at this space, we'd start this project out as a study and outreach effort to identify what these improvements could be before jumping into the design.
Nothing on this one?
Okay. All right, 220th Ave Southeast and Southeast 51st Street improvements. This is a design phase that's being proposed, starting in the year 2028. Then there's a development proposed on Southeast 51st Street. Some of our recent data shows this route's popular among non-motorized users. When we begin the design of this project, we have an option to either repurpose a just-in-one left-turn lane or kind of an interim bike solution, or we could, you know, design this to the permanent four-street condition identified in the street standard. This one would likely be competitive for a non-motorized grant if we went that route as well.
Questions? Nope? Okay.
All right. And the last project added was the citywide advanced signage project. This project is new and was identified by a newly-formed local road safety plan. This safety plan looks at collision history and common characteristics that collisions maintain. The local road safety plan found that it reduce central collisions by implementing more advanced signage at critical curves. For this project, it's possible we could design and implement this with city resources. It'd also be competitive for highway safety improvement program grant. It makes sense to do it more than just adding a few signs here and there. So and during design, we'd kind of make that call.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
And I, again, I just like all these new projects really well, but this one, I was looking at 2029, and just since it is a safety project, I was just wondering if there's any way to accelerate this, or is this a project that's, I know we need to do a study first, but it just seems like 2029 is a long way out there. We're not actually even getting the signs in 2029. It would be even later after we've done the study. So this one seems a little bit more urgent to me, and I'm wondering, I don't know how relatively small this is in the big picture, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to accelerate this one.
Certainly, it seems possible to me, something we can talk about. And if there is some more involved areas, like there could be some early wins, get those ones done, and then maybe down the line, raise it up. I'm just thinking about sequential lights that I've seen on freeways where maybe that's...
Oh. Councilmember Hall?
So just to clarify, so is this a kind of an hour, an evaluation of our needs for advanced warning signs generally, or is it more about like specific problem corners or curves that we're seeing through data?
That's, that's how we kind of got to this project was through the data, that some of the collision data, what I understand, and the local road safety found that a lot of the, or some of the accidents are from these kind of tight curves. There's a lack.
I see that Engineering Manager John Mortensen turned on his camera. John, did you have something you'd wanted to add?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit. When we did the local road safety plan, kind of like what Greg was saying, we identified characteristics of situations where we're more likely to have accidents, and we found that improving, adding some advanced warning signs would reduce accidents based on the data. And this is also something that's also an ongoing effort, that we do have a project in the TIP, but we do still work on adding advanced warning signs as we see problems. An example of that is with the safety bundle, which was funded with the ARPA funds. We're working on improving a curve, I think it's off Mountain Place, if I remember right, but it is something that is an ongoing effort. But we also wanted to identify this as a potential for a grant and because there's funding out there to make me do more than what we otherwise could do.
Councilmember Hall?
Follow-up. Number one, that's fantastic, and I loved how this is so data-informed in terms of project selection. So I guess my question now is, since this is 2029 anticipated design, is there anything in terms of being able to capture the data necessary to make an informed decision about where a sign should go that we should be doing now to prepare for that? Or do we feel like our data capabilities are going to meet the moment for this? Is there anything we should be doing sooner rather than later to prepare for this?
Actually, the data and the analysis that we did as part of the local road safety plan is the first step, and as we get accident data each year, just evaluating and updating the road's safety plan in order to see what changes and be more proactive.
Okay, so it really is accident data that would be driving this, then, not necessarily like anything we'd be getting from ITS or anything like that, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I have the, I have the, I don't understand question. When we're talking about advanced signage, does the adjective "advanced" describe where it is in the road or that it is advanced technology?
Where it is.
Okay. I was, because I was thinking, well, this is cool. This is advanced signage. This isn't just everyday signage. But it's, it's, we're going to put signage before a hazardous area. Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Greg.
I'll see if I can find a special sign.
Okay, I appreciate that. Splashing is good.
Yeah. All right. The options for tonight's committee meeting are to modify the transportation improvement program or to make no changes to it and recommend the full city council at the public hearing for the city council meeting on June 3.
Can we, do we have time to do that? So setting the meeting for June 3 would mean the council would have to take action ahead of June 3, right? City Clerk, looking to you.
Sorry, Chair. No, I believe the public hearing would be set for the June 3 council meeting.
So setting the public hearing doesn't require action?
Correct.
Okay. No, no, thank you. All right, I'm good. Thanks, Carrie.
Right. And so the administration's recommendation is for the approval of a resolution adopting that 30 transportation improvement program at the special.
You want to hit the calendar events here?
Yeah.
Timing and next steps?
Next steps for the transportation improvement program would be the public hearings at June 3 and the ultimate adoption on June 24. The city is mandated to adopt its transportation improvement program by July 1. After it's adopted, the staff will submit a date, 5/31, the middle deadline.
Okay. Any, any more questions for Greg and John? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Two clarifying questions. First is, I think I understand the environmental board's feedback, but I don't, I think I would, actually, I would like you to kind of walk us through a little bit more the paragraph that came after that in terms of the administration's response, the environmental board feedback and where not to make changes to the, to the TIP like selection process and stuff like that. Could you walk us through a little bit more about how the administration chose to respond or not? Feedback of the environmental board.
All right. We got the feedback at the meeting, ordered up with a memo. That's their feedback. We went through memo. Because they were, they were responding a lot to what they have made. That's what goes with, you know, John.
Yeah, I added just a couple items on the environmental board's feedback. The intent of the feedback, we felt like the process was already incorporating, but maybe the method of going about it. So some of the criterias that the environmental board wanted to be part of the selection process were actually already considered, but in other parts of the scoring criteria, not the promote environment criteria. And so that was an example of something where the environmental board gave feedback, but we felt like the mobility master plan selection process already took into that, and that was about promoting transportation that supports Central Issaquah essentially. And some of the feedback that we also received didn't pertain to the TIP, but it pertained to how we implement transportation projects, such as construction materials. And those are things that we made note of to consider as we implement the TIP, but they weren't comments that pertain to how we develop the TIP.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that first part helped clear up some of the memo in my mind. So the implementation feedback, certainly, that's not something that really influences this, but you're saying some of the feedback on criteria is actually already accounted for in the mobility master plan, not, not the other plan, not this plan?
Yeah, at the environmental board, we, we discussed the promote environment section of the mobility master plan, but there's other aspects of the climate action plan that kind of go beyond just that one section of, maybe next, last one for us, identify what could bring more than just that promote environment, bring anything concerning climate action.
Or maybe even asking them what they'd like to see. It could be helpful, too. Okay, thank you. And then the second question I had, if that's okay, with someone else, was the last one that I had emailed in. So if I remember correctly, last year, we had a very similar, similar options at the end of the memo that said, like, modify it, note that the impact of modifying means that we'll, we won't meet the deadline, or we just pass it as it is. And we had just, I think we had noted it as a committee, and we'd also said, well, it's a kind of cleanup year anyway, so we'll have kind of a broader conversation the next year. So I think I understood your response, but I'm wondering if you could walk us through, should we think of this as a problem, that it's coming to us at a time where if we want to make any changes, perhaps there's not a lot of a flexibility to then pass it on time? And also, now I'm remembering, are there even any impact to not passing it on time? So maybe you could just comment on all the rambling.
I'll go ahead and take this one, and then Greg, if you have anything to add to it, you can. I guess the first one is, there is no consequence for not adopting it on time. We don't want to be in a habit of missing the deadline, but during COVID, we adopted We don't want to be in a habit of missing the deadline, but during COVID, we adopted in October, and I specifically emailed the state and asked them, and they said, well, there's no consequence for not doing it on time. So that said, we don't want to get in the habit of not adopting it on time. And I guess in terms of how we go about developing the tip, there are some trade offs. We could take it to the mobility and infrastructure committee earlier, but that would probably also mean less touch points with the transportation advisory board. And so the schedule we came up with, and we're open to changing it, but for this year, we wanted to really work heavily with the TAB and come to you with a very well thought out tip. But there is time to make changes to it. Now, we generally try and make less changes during these even year updates than we do when we do the C I P, because when we're updating the C I P, the city's able to look at all of its revenue sources, all of its potential projects. So that's one of the reasons why we don't want to try and meddle with it too much, but we definitely do have time to make modifications if the committee wanted to make changes to it.
I just, I wanted to underscore that. Hi, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder. There is plenty of time to make changes, and we, we have been having lots of conversations with TAB, the Transportation Advisory Board, but we are here to ask for your feedback. So if you have changes that you would like us to make, we certainly can include those in the T I P update.
All right, thank you both for the clarification. I think I just saw in the memo that it said it would be adopted past the deadline, and so it's kind of out a little bit, but maybe, maybe this was copied from the previous memo.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's mid-May. We'd like to have it adopted by July 1. That still leaves us quite a bit of time. If council wanted us to completely overhaul and revamp everything in the T I P, that might be a little hard to do that by the July deadline, but certainly if you have a couple of projects, you want us to look at timelines or make changes to the, that's exactly why we're here tonight, is to understand what your feedback is and to make the changes that you would like us to make.
And just real quick, before I forget, thank you for being so intentional about reaching out to the Transportation Advisory Board so many times. I think that's the right.
So I want, one, maybe it's two questions, but the five projects are all 2028, 2029, which to me means they're probably beyond our known funding window. Do we have any funding lined up for these five projects? Or is it future funding opportunities?
Yeah, I think the actual transportation improvement sells it out, but yeah, we got, a lot of them are impact fees, looking at projected revenues, where we think what will be available. Also, you know, the grants that we've identified, we're assuming we get those part of this tip.
Yeah, no, that's kind of what I was thinking, but it kind of actually, it was a setup question, because the second one is if we change the dates and the timing of it, what does that do to our funding model? Is that then a kind of a, does it, I don't know how closely we've kind of legitited some of these other things, so.
I would say for some of the projects, the ones we're pursuing, the grants, those ones are hard to move forward because we're kind of on their schedule for those grants, so those are a little tougher to move. Some of the, the planning ones, I think we have got $1,000 to do that. Those are easier to move, and we're assuming half time for those. We wanted to, if we didn't have staff availability to do those, we'd have to get a consultant.
Great, great.
Can I add to that?
Oh, please do.
Okay, thanks. Certainly, council determines the budget for the projects that we do. Council approves the transportation improvement plan. So all that said, if there are projects that you want us to move around, we would love to hear about that this evening, and then we may need some time to take a look at that, see what is feasible within the resources that we have, both staff and dollars wise, if there's other things we need to move around as a result. But if council states strongly that something is a priority over other things, then we certainly want to hear that information, and we'll do what we can to meet that priority.
Great, thanks, I appreciate that. Any other questions? I don't see any. Okay, so we're in another public comment opportunity. Anybody online there, City Clerk?
Chair Ray, we have nobody online at the time.
Okay. I don't see anybody in the room. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna move past that, and we're gonna go into providing some feedback. So the direction that is being asked for is feedback on whether the proposed transportation improvements, the project mix, the new projects, the timing and the funding strategy makes sense. Who would like to get started? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Yeah, I will go first as I type out my last notes, so I don't forget. Okay, I think, yeah, for the most part, I'm happy with kind of make the projects that you've got here, the new projects and existing ones and the annual ones. It seems like the newer projects are really focused on pedestrian and bike facilities, intersection improvements, things competitive for grant funding, as you highlighted, and then also things that are really informed by data, which I think are all good things. Last year, as we were kind of cleaning up the T I P, this committee said, we really want to make sure we take a hard look at our transportation projects, that we have a healthy balance between things that are car focused and things that are multi-mobility focused. I went through all of the projects and assigned little tallies for whether I thought it benefited cars, or if it benefited multimodal system, or if it benefited both, or if it was more other. So this is all subjective, my own criteria, but it seemed like it was fairly balanced. For projects benefiting multimodal system, it was 18. Projects benefiting cars, it was 20, and other were six. That does not add up to the number, the total number of projects. Some were kind of benefited both, especially when it had intersection improvements, I kind of thought that benefited both. So again, I think there's a really good balance there. I think we can tell our community and tell Transportation Advisory Board, the environmental board, that yes, this is a really good mix of projects. I think it's hard to evaluate whether this is the right funding strategy for things in 2028, 2029. Like, I'll caveat that. I think identifying that they would be good candidates for state and federal grant dollars is good, but any of the other kind of revenues that exist there are all our best guess, right? So I don't know necessarily how to provide feedback on that part, except to say, you know, that will evolve year over year, right? As it, as it gets closer to it, as we identify new sources, as it just becomes clearer picture. So I did want to ask a couple things. Well, I guess first, let me just wrap up the, from my question. I'm glad that we were so intentionally involved with our boards and commissions. I'm glad that we do have the time to make changes, not necessarily that I'd like to make changes, but just that we have a process in place that would allow council to do so. So it seems like we do, and we're in a good place, so I appreciate it. First thing I wanted to bring up was, on all of the project pages, we can very easily see if this is part of a particular master planning document. This project came from the mobility master plan. This project came from the walk and roll plan, but not the future projects, kind of the longer term projects. So I was wondering if it might be possible to identify if those came from a particular plan? Could that be listed in kind of the future years, ages? I don't know if that would be a lot of work. I don't necessarily feel super strongly that if it's a lot of work, that it happened before we adopted, but at least at some point, it would make sense for our visibility of knowing how well we're doing with the mobility master plan, but then also the community's visibility. The only other thing I wanted to ask about was, one of the projects I had asked about was TR 43. Was Newport Way, SR 900, a 12th Avenue Northwest bicycle and pedestrian improvement. So this is like the area between skate park and the bus station or the transit center. I, actually, every, every time on the way back from council, I drive this place back home now, and that area is super dangerous now, and people turning left onto SR 900 going west. So bikers going by and pedestrians going by, it's really hard. And there's a really highly used skate park right there, too. So I'm very in favor of that project being in there. It seems like we have some additional left-hand turn capacity coming with TR 22, and that's eastbound on Newport, but not necessarily where this project is, which is westbound Newport. And it's just something I've noticed, I don't, I'm not necessarily asking for a change, it's just something I've noticed is, all the way to the beginning, actually, all the way to target from SR 900, it'll be completely backed up on cars, people blocking the intersections, so people can't get up the mountain over by Tibbetts Park, too. So just something I've noticed, it might, if it's not existing somewhere in the T I P, it might be worth thinking about in the future. Then the only other, oh no, that was it, those are my comments. So I think from a high level, well done, and thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Yeah, excuse me, let me get this a little closer. There we go. Well, I loved all of the new projects. Every single one, I thought, oh, they've really identified where we need to make improvements. And, you know, my favorite is that one on Dogwood, but the one on Juniper and Gilman, yes, you know. I am wondering if it would be appropriate to share with the full council some of our collision information. It would be interesting to know just how dangerous some of these intersections might be, just a thought going into the future. I also noticed when I was going through the list that there have been projects removed because we got grant funding for them, and there was like three, I think, identified that were removed. And again, I thought that might be information that the full council would like to know that, hey, look, these were taken off because we got some highway grant funding for those projects. So I thought that was very interesting. I think that this is ready to go to the council on June 3. I just do have, you know, this little tiny, tiny tweak would be if we moved the starting year of that TR 097 up a little bit, but I understand the explanation that was given, and the fact that it's an ongoing project makes sense to me as well. It seems like sort of a no brainer that some of these hard curves and things could be signed pretty quickly, and we don't have to wait for a study to know that they're, they're dangerous. So, but those are my thoughts. Excellent work. Again, I just, every time transportation comes in front of us, we get a really good report with a lot of thought behind it. I agree with Councilmember Hall that the touches with the TAB and the environmental board were, were well worth the time, and the feedback there was really good to read. So thank you for that as well. So that's, those are my comments.
I appreciate those, and I want to dig into the timing of 97. And this is, this is the only one that I've heard of the five new ones, any kind of material change. And so I want to get us aligned on, do we think we should define being a 2930, or do we want to suggest or ask staff to assess the feasibility of moving it, moving it up? Councilmember DeMichele?
I guess my question would be, if, if it, as described, perhaps this is just fine the way it is, I'm looking at Andrea, to maybe tell us whether it would actually make any difference if it's an ongoing project, if we change the timeline in this, it would still be an ongoing project, right? And so I don't know that we're really making any substantial change if we ask for it to be accelerated, so.
While it is an ongoing project, I think if it's something that council feels strongly about, it's better to have it reflected in the T I P as you would like to see it. And so, because we use that as the basis for budgeting and work plans, et cetera. So if that's something that this committee feels strongly, that we should go back and sharpen our pencils and see how we can try to move that project up, then, then we will absolutely do that.
Oh, Councilmember DeMichele, and then Councilmember Hall?
Oh, okay, then I think we should do it.
All right, Councilmember Hall?
I'm curious what the effect of that would be, because it doesn't have a table for funding there. It just says like $2,000 annual. So would the effect of that be some increase from $2,000 and then trying to find makeup annually amongst the other project?
It, it would probably include trying to find the budget for it. As you know, it's a planning document, not a budget at this point, and so we would, we would try to figure out a way to fund it, and it might mean, maybe, as we draft the budget, trying to find cost savings elsewhere. I see our transportation manager, John Mortensen, has his hand raised.
Yes, this project would be a great candidate for Washdott's Highway Safety Grant that they have, or H S I P. And the next call for projects will be in 2026, and I think those funds would be available towards the end of 2026. And I don't know if timeline, if that's still too far out, or if that's something the committee would be okay with if we put it in to begin in 2026. And that would also help with the funding.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, but also let me ask a dumb question. Does, if it's, it has to do with highways, does that mean it's just relevant to opening up advanced signs near highways, or how does that work?
No, it's just the name of the federal program. They have it broken out between two competitions, one for cities and one for counties, and they rotate where cities do even years and counties do odd years. We actually applied for some funds, and haven't heard the results, but we focused on pedestrian crossings with the last grant application.
Okay. All right, so what I think I heard, and I agree with, is asking staff to look at the impact of moving the, what is it, like $1.2 million-ish? See if we can move that forward, maybe tying it to the grant cycle that John was just speaking to, and, and then what the impact might be on other initiatives. And then we can discuss that with the full council. But other than that, that was the only thing that, I mean, I, I'd like to say I have all sorts of great insights that weren't already talked about, but I don't. So that was the only thing that I heard that was sort of hanging out there that I wanted to drive closure on. Anything else that we, so we're, we're making minor modifications to the improvement plan relative to 97, TR 97, or asking at least to assess the viability of moving it forward in the timeline. Other than that, is there anything else we're looking for in terms of change? I didn't see, hear of any, and so, and I think we are good with setting a public hearing for the council on June 3, and then looking for action on that before the end of June. Not even going to do a vote, because I think we are completely in a raging agreement, right? Okay, and so this is something I think we put on regular business down the road, and I look into you, Greg, do you, and have what you guys need to get this ready for the June 3 public hearing?
I do, yes. TR 97 should have a table, so. No, it's not, it's missing, so.
The, the line item was up in the big table on the top with, with the data, but, okay, well, let me look back here at our agenda. What's that? Yeah, it was bargain. Okay, that is, that was our last agenda item. Any? Any announcements from the committee? No? All right, we're adjourned at 7:20. Uh-oh, anything else? Nope. All right, we're adjourned at 7:20. Thanks, everybody.